Going to call the meeting for Wednesday, November 6th, 2019 to order at 7:01 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Okay, if you could all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to this holy and liberating place, one nation, under God, in the judicial, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, no changes, so I'm going to go into the president's report. Good evening, and welcome again to the students, staff, and families from Samuel Bissell Elementary and Arby Chamberlain Middle School. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for November 6th, 2019. I'm Ron Felber, and I'm honored to serve as your president of the Board of Education. As election season has concluded, let me congratulate Mark Curtis and Adrian Gordon on their election to the Board of Education. Tonight, we will hear administrative report on the year-long strategic planning process. This process involved hundreds of community volunteers, parents, students, and staff working on six key committees. The board then participated in three open work sessions to review the community's recommendations and finalize the plan. And tonight's agenda is approval of a one-year, the one-year, year one, rather, goals for the five-year plan, and Superintendent Powers will present the administrative report in detail. But now, as always, we look out in the audience and we're reminded why we're here, our amazing students, so without further delay, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. As always, it's a packed house, and we do appreciate seeing everybody here, especially our students, who just make it such a great place to work and grow, and we look forward to hearing all about your accomplishments at Bissell and at RBC from your principals very shortly. As Mr. Felber just said, congratulations to Mr. Curtis and Mrs. Gordon on their election to the Board of Education, and we look forward to working with them as they lead the district in support of our students. I want to congratulate Twinsburg High School cross-country Lady Tiger Alyssa Deeds upon her 66th-place finish at last weekend's OHSAA State Cup Cross Country Championship meet in Hebron, Ohio. Also, congratulations to our coaches, Coach Sarah Komet and Assistant Coach David Zoldos, as well as the entire cross-country team for a wonderful fall season. We congratulate Alyssa, understanding that she's one of our most decorated student athletes ever at Twinsburg High School in cross-country, and we congratulate her and wish her well the rest of the school year and up to graduation and beyond. Board of Education, this is a very special week in our school district, as many of our schools will be welcoming our veterans for special programs which honor the veterans for their unselfish service to our community and to our country. On Thursday this week, Arby Chamberlain Middle School will honor our veterans with a special morning concert, and on Friday, Wilcox Primary School will host its annual Bring a Vet to Lunch Day, and next Monday, Samuel Bissell Elementary School will host their special program in collaboration with the Bissell PTA. We sincerely appreciate our PTA's support of our special programs for our veterans, and we thank our veterans for their service to our country, and we look forward to celebrating with them, starting Thursday of this week, Friday, and then again next week, which actually Monday, as the observance of Veterans' Day in our country. Board, I want to take a moment to thank everyone who participated in last month's Fill the Bus donation drive for the Emergency Assistance Center. Thanks to your generosity, our school community donated 6,457 pounds of food, and this is up from 5,840 pounds last year. So, we did a great job. Thank you very much for coming together and supporting the Emergency Assistance Center. And for those of you who don't know, the Emergency Assistance Center is our wonderful partner in our Paws on Child Hunger Program. Paws on Child Hunger Program provides a backpack of healthy nutritious snacks to students who are food insecure over weekends. So, the Emergency Assistance Center has been our partner for many years, and we appreciate what they do for us, and in turn, we want to support them and their food pantry. So, boys and girls, if you brought some food last week, thank you so very much. We sure did fill that bus with 6,400 pounds of food. That's a lot of food. And also, we want to thank the members of our Twinsburg High School varsity football team under the direction of Coach Mike Bell. On Saturday of last week, the football team followed the bus to the Twinsburg, I'm sorry, the Emergency Assistance Center, and helped unload all that food. That was a lot of food to unload. Good thing the boys were strong, and they helped weigh it and put it on shelves for the pantry. So, we thank the boys on our football team, and Coach Bell and his assistant coaches for supporting that as well. Board of Education, this evening, as Mr. Felber indicated, our district's proposed strategic plan will be formally introduced to you. As you know, Board of Education, we have had three work sessions in the last month to provide an opportunity for the facilitators to give you an inside look as to all of the work that went into it. We had another meeting last week to provide an opportunity for more dialogue amongst the board members, and those three meetings actually followed more than two years of meetings, starting with focus groups three years ago, went to community forums, and then ultimately, action teams, rather, and then ultimately to the board for consideration. So, it's been quite a process, and we sure do appreciate all of the members of our community. As Mr. Felber indicated, almost 200 members of the community who came together volunteered their time, volunteered a lot of opportunities for research and development of the plan, and this evening, we'll be introducing that to everybody formally for the very first time. So, without further ado, we're here to celebrate Outstanding Students of the Month from Samuel Bissell Elementary School, so I'd like to invite to the front our wonderful principal, Mrs. Misty Johnson.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education, and to all our parents and to our students. So happy to see you all. You look so handsome and beautiful and gorgeous, so today is your day to shine. So excited to celebrate with you this evening. Just to share with you a little bit about the Students of the Month at Samuel Bissell. Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of the recognition program is on citizenship, academics, socio-civic volunteer, and other accomplishments that set students apart from their peers. So, tonight, we're going to proudly acknowledge some of our second graders, and so, second graders, when I call your name, you're going to come up, you know, you always give me a hug, but you're going to come up, give me a hug, you're going to shake hands with Mrs. DeFabio, and you're going to shake hands with Mrs. Powers, and she's going to present you with your Student of the Month award. And then, when you receive it, we would like for you to stand up here so that at the very end, we can get your pictures from your, your parents will have a chance to get pictures of you, and then, of course, we'll have pictures to share on Twitter, because you know I love doing that, too. So, if I could just share ahead of time, RBC's Student of the Month is right after Bissell, so if we could just stay until after RBC's students are recognized, so we can be here for them as well, that would be great, if we could do that. So, let's start with our second graders. And our first second grader is from Miss Conrad's class, Landon Anderson. Alyssa Kelly from Mrs. Finn's class. Casey Sipin from Mrs. Holliday's class. Cassie Sipin. Zariah Williams from Mrs. Springer's class. Auden Zimmerman from Mrs. Robel's class. Boys and girls, if you can turn your lovely picture around, show everybody your picture. Turn it around. Turn it around, Cassie. Turn around, Cassie, turn around. This way. Can we give them a round of applause? Nice job. All right, second graders, congratulations. You can take your seats. Great job. And now for our third graders. Alana Benson from Mrs. Dorla's class. Arianna Cooper from Mr. Labus's class. Rashni Despandy from Mrs. Roe Wetter's class. Natalie Foster from Miss Polinski's class. Gwen Fries from Mrs. P's class. Justin Van from Mrs. Glavitz's class. And these are our third graders. If we could give them another round of applause. All right, very nice job. Third graders, you can have a seat at this time. We're so proud of you. Great job. Keep up the good work. We also would like to share with you our Staff of the Month. Staff members are nominated by their colleagues, and they're recognized for the great job that they're doing throughout the school year. So, the first one I'm going to share with us, with you, I should say, the first one I'm going to share with you is a long-term sub, but she has done an amazing job for our staff, for our building, actually. She has really put in a lot of effort, she goes above and beyond, these are my words. I'll share with you what her colleagues think about her, but she has really stepped into the role as if she was the classroom teacher. She takes it to heart, she loves the students, she's a team player, and we were very, very lucky and very happy to have her as part of our team. But this is what I would like to share with you. It was written by Miss Conrad, and it says, "It is a pleasure to nominate Ms. Kayla Benzey as Staff of the Month." Ms. Benzey, can you come forward? While she has been hired as a long-term sub, from day one, she has taken on the responsibilities of a full-time teacher. Ms. Benzey does this with professionalism, enthusiasm, and with her love to the teaching profession. She is always kind, considerate, and is very connected to her students. As her neighboring teacher and coworker, I see her positive commitment every day. Ms. Benzey touches the hearts of all of her students. Her personality is outgoing, and she is all-in, and I have to say it like that because it's all capital letters. Ms. Benzey's passion for teaching is evident in the way she makes learning a fun and positive for each and, for each learning experience. She recently shared a book with me titled, "The Happy Dreamer." Hopefully, Ms. Benzey's dream to become a full-time teacher will come true. In closing, Ms. Benzey is giving her students a foundation for lifelong learning. Thank you, Ms. Benzey, for all that you do. And that is so true. Our second Staff of the Month goes out to Ms. Brittany Wortman. This was written by Ms. Julie Anderson. I would like to nominate Interventional Specialist Brittany Wortman. Where do I start? I'm so glad that Bissell got her back from RBC. I'm hiding from Mr. Reese, so that I had the opportunity to work with her this year. She is considerate, providing a desk in a locker for her instructional assistants. She took the time every morning to handwrite out a daily changing schedule for me for this entire first month of school, which made me confident in my new blended learning role with both the second and the third grade. She then printed out a regular schedule in color, making it far easier to read until I got into the routine. She printed out IEP summaries for me, as well as two other instructional assistants that are working with her students, so we could complete our subfolders on time. She is able to recognize my skill set, utilize me to my full potential, so I can accomplish so much more. She is approachable, resourceful, and listens to suggestions you bring to the table, and, all caps, implements them. I feel comfortable going to her for guidance or a solution for student, for student. Her directions are clear and precise, leaving little to question. She will locate any necessary materials to advance her students, and has the utmost patience with each and every one of them. I learn something new from watching her techniques every single day. There isn't anything I would not do to help her out. Way to go, Ms. Wortman. Hold your award in front of you and smile for the camera. Congratulations, ladies. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to one of our third-grade teachers, Ms. Polinski, and she's going to, go ahead, I'll let you, go ahead. And she's going to share with you some amazing things that her third graders are doing in class, and I just love their creativity, how they think outside of the box, and they really, really, she pushes them, and I tell you, they rise to the occasion. It's amazing to see the work that they do. So, I'm very happy that she agreed to share with you this evening. I think you will enjoy listening to our students and hearing what they're doing over at Bissell.
Thank you so much. I'm going to have my students that are here to present come up with me, please. So, thank you, Board, thank you, Mrs. Powers, for having us back. So, we're going to do two different presentations, and they're pretty quick. Mrs. Johnson got to see, oh, thank you, she got to see one of our nutrition digestion activities, which was a project-based learning activity. So, this is somebody that's on vacation, and so, what we did was, I did a zigzag teaching technique where each of the five groups had five kids in their group, and what they did was, they had one, oh, sorry, oh, thank you, one step of the digestive process, and then they come together and we put it together like a puzzle. But, so, this whole thing was greetings from the digestive system, so you're going to be taking a trip with us through the digestive system, and then, I have two students on the end, Jake and Luke, for something very exciting that we're going to be doing this year. It's my first year doing it, but I'm super excited about it, but I'm not going to steal their thunder.
Greetings from the very hot mouth. We are having a great time chewing up food and making it easier for the rest of the digestive system. That is our job after all. Next up, I mean down the esophagus.
Greetings from the esophagus. We are having so much fun in the esophagus. Your esophagus is a skinny tube that pushes your food to your stomach. While you're visiting, you should definitely slide down to the pool of saliva in the stomach, because that's the next stop in the digestive system.
It's looking really good down here, but it's getting a little mushy and loud because of all the food being chopped up down here. I thought I was on vacation. Oh, well, maybe my next stop, the small intestine, won't be so bad.
Greetings from the small intestine. I'm just here, the small intestine surfing on a bloodstream looking for some food to smash up. The water is pretty calm, but I heard that there is a large intestine tsunami coming soon, so I better find some shelter. Talk soon.
Hello from the large intestine. Things are going well in Step Five, just doing what we do. You guys should come down here sometime, but you may not have a pleasant experience because of the aroma, but our job is extremely important, because we get rid of what your body doesn't need anymore. Thank you for taking a trip around the digestive system with us, and don't forget, each time you eat, make sure you remember all the work your body does for you.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to thank the Board and Mrs. Powers for allowing us to come to and speak to you about our exciting new project-based learning activity for this school year. It's not over. Here's a very important question to start. What's a podcast, anyway? A podcast is an audio show that's about 30 minutes long on one topic. Each podcast has a different topic. For example, worms, Halloween, or even ice cream, yummy.
Ms. Polinski uploads different podcasts each week to our Google classrooms, and we can listen to them at school or at home. At school, we choose a podcast and then fill out a graphic organizer as our exit ticket. You may ask yourselves, why do we have to listen to all these podcasts?
Well, everyone, we are absolutely doing some research, because for our final project base activity, dun, 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 we will be creating our very own podcast, either with a partner or by ourselves.
Maybe next time you see Jake and I, we'll be presenting your famous podcast to all your wonderful people here. So, thank you for talking, okay, sorry, thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and have a great day.
Great night.
Who do I give this microphone to?
So, as you can tell, they're super excited about the podcast. But thank you all for your attention. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reese at this time. Once again, I'm so proud of you, third graders. Keep reaching for the stars. You're doing a wonderful job, and congratulations once again to all of our second and third grades, Students of the Month.
Great job, Bissell students. The digestive system is my favorite system, because I like to eat. My least favorite system is the nervous system, especially when I have to stand up and talk with my man with the glasses, he's nerves of steel, and that was awesome. Okay, we're here to, RBC Students of the Month. Our Students of the Month are selected for the following criteria. They show respect and consideration, they show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities, they exert a positive influence on classmates, they exhibit leadership characteristics, they exhibit patriotism and democratic principles, and they show responsibility. Now, at the middle school level, I always tell the kids, you always keep your hands and your feet to yourself, so we don't encourage hugging very much at the middle school level, but we do give the occasional fist bump, we say. So, getting the occasional fist bump this month, we have seventh grade, Leana Kleppich. I said that one time in an assembly, and for some reason, the kids thought that was great, and so, they always, except for the occasional fist bump. Seventh graders, just want to slide down a little bit and make some room, we'll get our eighth graders up here. I don't believe Rachel Zarella, I don't believe Rachel was able to make it. Give her a round of applause. And Mohammed Atif. Everyone, hold their signs up, and we can get some pictures. All right, now, one more round of applause for the Students of the Month. You can head back to your seats. So, in the month since I was last here, we had our Spirit Week, and our students create the themes for the week, and we do our Spirit Week the same week as Red Ribbon Week, which is an anti-drug week, and so, they tied the themes together, so this was the wittiness of our middle schoolers. We had Follow Your Dreams, Stay Away From Drugs, which of course is Pyjama Day, and the excuse to wear their pajamas at school. They had Team Up Against Drugs, which was our sports wear day. Drugs Aren't Funny, which is our meme day, which I had no idea what the dress for is at, but they, that was their favorite day, I think. They had Lay Off Drugs, which was Hawaiian Day, and then on Friday, we had Rally Against Drugs, which was our blue and white pet rally day, which included our food drive, and winning the pet rally and the food drive was our eighth grader, so we really had a fun week with positive messages and having fun. And also, in the last month, seventh grader Jayden Sparks was a winner of the Ohio Lottery Partner in Education All-Star Award. Kevin Zoo, who's here, and Logan Lockamere were picked for the OMEA District Six Honors Band. RBC seventh grader Ryan Kramer was in the Akron Beacon Journal as a kid with character. So, that was some awesome month for us, and tomorrow, we invite anyone who's free, 8:00 a.m., especially our veterans, we have our Veterans' Day Assembly, and the kids put on a great show.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. I know you'd all love to stick around and hear our committee reports and all the rest of the business, but if you've got homework, dinner, things to do, now is a good time to get out.
Thank you very much.
We'll continue in just a moment, as soon as the doors close. All right, seems like it's getting quiet down, so we'll go ahead and continue our, any committee reports from my colleagues.
Yes, Mr. Felber. Business Advisory Council met on October 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the CBCC. We toured the CBCC, saw a few programs, was able to talk to a few students in the machine shop, and spoke with the teacher there, the instructor, just about the programs that they offer, the work that those kids are doing. Amazing, amazing programs that they got going on there. This is the second time I've been to CBCC in a week. This is the second time I've been to CBCC in a week. And it's just an unbelievable amount of opportunities for our students. So, we also looked at the restaurant, toured the restaurant. They do have a restaurant that went, I believe, what, Wednesday through Friday, Mr. Curtis, I believe? So, we'd encourage anybody, they're open for lunch, if you're interested, to give them a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slurr. Any other committee reports?
Yes, I had the opportunity to, I guess I'll kind of back up a little bit, just to kind of explain. But I was selected among hundreds of, you know, people that are eligible to be chosen to serve on a newly-formed committee through the Ohio School Boards Association called the Diversity and Equity Committee. So, we've been doing a lot of work over the last year and a half since the committee was formed to kind of develop a comprehensive strategy of how we can work to develop guidance for school districts around the state to address issues of diversity and equity. And out of that work came an agreement to break up into subcommittees. So, one of the subcommittees was actually Equity. And I was chosen to lead that subcommittee. So, two Saturdays ago, I want to say, we actually had a work session. So, I drove down to Columbus, had an opportunity to lead the work session for the Equity Committee. And what we were able to accomplish is basically to put together not only guidance for school districts around the state, but a toolkit that they can use for purposes of kind of developing their own policies, and also looking at some best practices that are happening around the state. One of the interesting things that we had to do is, I was responsible, we were all responsible for bringing resources together so that we could have some conversation around the resources that we brought in hopes of kind of refining some of the items in the tool bucket. And one of the resources that I provided was a book that was given to me, and the name escapes me, Mrs. Powers, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the book. But the Ohio School Boards Association, the Diversity and Equity Committee, felt compelled to adopt that book, and they are going to purchase the book and provide it for members of all of the members of the Diversity and Equity Committee. So, I was really pleased by that. I was not expecting that. There was a lot of good work that we were able to accomplish. All of the subcommittees came back together, kind of shared out what their strategies were and the processes that they went through to come to consensus on some of the things that they agreed to do. And we are going to be hosting a session at the Ohio School Boards Meeting in Columbus, where we're going to talk about our work on a larger stage. So, I'm pretty excited about the work. I think it's groundbreaking. I think that it's something that is needed in Ohio, and I feel very fortunate as part of our school district to be a representative on that committee. So, that's some of the things that happened in my work on the Diversity and Equity Committee through Ohio School Boards Association.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any other committees? Waiting for the door to close. All right, we are at Administrative Report. Superintendent Powers, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Board of Education, as I mentioned during my comments earlier this evening, our school district has been engaged in important work for about three years. We annually, Board of Education annually adopts district goals, but we recognize that a strategic plan was necessary. And three years ago, the Board of Education began to engage the community in conversations. First focus groups happened. And from those focus groups, great work happened, including the facilities assessment that Mr. Welker has been leading that would indicate how our facilities are doing as far as warm, safe, and dry, making some recommendations for some renovations and work that needs to be done. So, that was three years ago. Last school year, we began to engage action teams based upon the work that was done in the focus groups. And there are six action teams that are related to the strategic plan. We have the Twenty-First Century Teaching and Learning Action Team that was led by our Curriculum Director, Jennifer Farthing. We have our Communications Action Team that was led by our Director of Human Resources, Tim Solon. We have our Culture and Climate Action Team that was led by Mrs. Denise Trapphegan, our Director of Pupil Services. We have our Facilities Action Team, led, of course, by Chad Walker, our business manager. Our Finance Action Team, led by Marty A. Hope, Appropriate being our treasurer and at the helm of a forty-two million dollar operation. And then, of course, we had, last but not least, our Safety Action Team. And that was led by two of our outstanding building principals, Jim Reese and Misty Johnson. And, you know, the action team regarding safety was really very important. And if you remember, a couple of years back, we actually had a forum over at the high school, and we talked to our community about safety and keeping our students safe. And actually, that was part of this action team effort that informed the strategic plan. So, I bring this to your attention, there's a timeline up here, but it talks from October 1st of 2018. Clearly, the work of the development of the strategic plan predates August, I'm sorry, October of 2018. The Board and the administrative team has engaged with members of our community, our staff members, we've had students involved, our parents, local business owners, as we look to create a strategic plan that would be the roadmap for the Twinsburg City School District for the next five years. This evening, I'm going to introduce to you the work of the action teams in an encapsulated form. There's many more documents behind what I'm presenting to you this evening, as you know. You have them all. We have worked through three work groups to discuss, share out, made some revisions. The Board had some suggestions, and you'll note those are made here this evening. And so, tonight, we're going to talk just about the goals and about some preliminary strategies that we'll be engaging in upon the approval of the strategic plan with the hopeful approval this evening. So, as we begin, action teams worked on, first and foremost, talking about the vision and the mission of the school district. And so, the vision of the school district is the high-level look at, what is the purpose for our school district? And so, the vision that was determined through the work of our committees was unwavering commitment, unlimited possibilities. And so, we're going to propose to you this evening, that would be the vision of the Twinsburg City School District, unwavering commitment, unlimited possibilities, meaning that the folks that work and support our students, be the staff that work here, the community that supports us, have an unwavering commitment to the boys and girls who attend school here, and when they attend school here, the possibilities they have are limitless. And so, that is the vision that we're proposing this evening as part of our strategic plan. Our mission statement is a brief description, a little bit more wordy than the vision statement. And three things came up repeatedly in the conversations that we had with our committee. Three most important things that we hold true and we value is our community, our educational programs that we offer our students, and making sure that upon graduation, our students are future-ready for success, whatever that success looks like, being driven by where our students would like their future to be. And so, we're proposing this evening that our mission statement would be partnering with the community, providing excellent educational programs, preparing future-ready students. And that aligns with our motto, and for many years, the motto from the district has been where the schools and the communities are one. And you'll find that motto on the bottom of our letterhead, on many of our documents on the district website, on our printed publications. But this mission statement says a little bit more than the motto, and it's current, talking about the need to have students ready for their futures, whatever their futures happen to be. So, now, we're going to switch to the work of the six action teams, beginning with the Twenty-First Century Teaching and Learning Action Team. Again, that was led by our Curriculum Director, Mrs. Jennifer Farthing, and a very active group of parents and staff members, teachers, classified staff, and administrators. And they rolled their sleeves up, and they wanted to talk about their vision, their goals for Twenty-First Century learning here in our school district. And they are recommending three goals for consideration this evening. The first would be to equip our students with foundational knowledge and skills across the curriculum. The second, empower students to be visionary leaders with superior reasoning skills. And the third would be to support the holistic well-being of each child. And this evening, we're going to just talk through some of the preliminary strategies, some of the work that will take place here in the initial year of the strategic plan. And goal one, when we're talking about foundational skills, our teachers work very well together in what we call professional learning communities. And one of the things that this committee is suggesting, that is through the work of the professional learning communities, that we align our district curriculum maps and our pacing guides and our common assessments, so that our students, no matter what walk of life they come from, have equity and inclusiveness in what they're doing here in our school districts, in our classrooms, preparing them for success. Goal number two, talking about empowering students to be visionary leaders. Board of Education, you heard Ms. Polinski this evening talk about project-based learning, and a partner of that is our Blending Learning Initiative here in our district. Thank you for your visionary leadership. We are in cohort year number two of our Tiger Learning Lab Pilot Project, which brings blended learning to our three elementary schools. And also, the Chromebook Initiative brings technology that supports blended learning to the two secondary buildings. But in this step, in goal number two for the Twenty-First Century Teaching and Learning Standard, we want to talk about the proposal for expanding that to cohort number three. And behind that, there has to be some research. And so, what I've asked our administrators to do, we actually had a principals meeting this morning, is talking about pulling together the data to support the expansion to cohort three, so that when the Board of Education makes that decision here in the winter to hopefully expand blended learning and all that means, in addition to curriculum pieces and technology, there's an investment in Twenty-First Century flexible learning furniture, too, that you will have the data to back up that decision. And so, this is the goal two, talking about visionary leaders in our students, helping them to be able to use good reasoning skills so that they can make good educational choices and be independent learners here in school, as well as into the future. Goal number three for this action team talked about the holistic well-being of each student. And you'll notice on the screen here, we're talking that this strategy would actually be implemented in year two, beginning with the 2021 school year. This goal talks primarily about the future-ready skills that students need to be successful. One of the things that we noticed in our partnership with the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, and as you know, Board of Education, through that partnership, the academy at Twinsburg High School was born, and it is very strong, thanks to that partnership and thanks to the leadership of our high school, and most particularly, Mr. Norm Potter, our curriculum supervisor. But through that effort, our business partners have identified skills that they would like us to help students learn and hone in our school district, skills talking about creativity and communication and collaboration and critical thinking, those Twenty-First Century skills that students need to be successful. And so, this particular goal talks specifically about that holistic approach, helping kids learn some of those soft skills that we hear so much about, and helping them understand how it's a whole package when they're being future-ready. It's academics, it's also being able to talk to each other, it's also being able to speak well, it's also about putting a cellphone down for a minute and able to have a conversation person to person. So, all those important skills that we want students to know and be able to do, and that will become part and parcel of this communication piece, interpersonal skills, and also teaching kids how to be empathetic to everyone. Our second action team was our Communications Action Team, as I previously mentioned, that was led by our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Tim Solon. This was a very interesting action team. I attended several of these meetings. All walks of life, all kinds of people were involved in this particular action plan committee. And we talked about how we communicate within the organization and outside of the organization. And we have three goals to present to you this evening regarding communications. The first talks about the implementation of the District Comprehensive Communications Plan. Board, as you know, last year, one of the district goals was to create, develop that comprehensive communications plan, which we did and presented to you last year. We still need to now drop in the strategic plan, too, so there will be an amended version of the comprehensive communications plan for your review. But that implementation is the first goal here in this school year. The second goal talks about the development of a crisis communications plan as an addendum to the District Comprehensive Communication Plan. And the third goal here talks about enhancing the district's brand. So, talking through some of the preliminary strategies for communication, as I just mentioned, we have a District Comprehensive Communication Plan that talks about the website and how we communicate in print, and how we communicate on the website, and such and so forth. But one of the places that we do need to strengthen are the communication protocols we would have should there be a crisis in the school district. And so, the first part here, the preliminary strategy for goal number one, and it's actually currently underway with an outside vendor, is to create a comprehensive communications plan that talks specifically about communication should there be a crisis in the school district. So, we look forward to bringing you those results of that work here in the near future. The second goal, again, talks about this external consultant. As you know, Board of Education, we've been working with Hennus Communications. They are a well-known firm out of the Cleveland area that works with school districts. Mr. Aho and I had an opportunity to hear Mr. Hennus present this winter, and talks about, you know, you don't want your school district or your organization to have a bad day and not have the plan to be able to support the communications, both internal and external of your organization. So, we have some things already in place in our comprehensive communications plan. This takes it to the very next level, and it will directly align to the district's emergency management plans, which we have obviously in place annually. Those are reviewed internal, the organization, our local law enforcement, both Chief Noga and Chief Morgan review those plans, and they're submitted then to Columbus for safekeeping. But this crisis communications plan will then live within our district's emergency management plan, so it will strengthen the plan that we have. And then, finally, goal number three talks about strengthening the branding and making sure that when we have visitors to our school district, they can find the places where they need to go. As you know, if you are inside the organization, for the most part, if somebody were to say to you, "Drive on over to Dodge and go in the door by the welcome center," you would think that would be pretty simple, and if you're inside the organization, that is the case. But what we have found is visitors don't know where our welcome centers are because they're not signed properly. And so, this goal will take it to the next level, making sure that we have what Mr. Solon has been calling wayfinding signs, so that we can find our way to different locations around the district. You know, one of the crown jewels of the district happens to be our city baseball field. I bet a lot of people in our community don't know where that is. It sits behind Dodge, there isn't a sign. And so, we want to make sure that our buildings and grounds are well-signed. We also want to make sure that our branding continues. We are very pleased and actually very happy for our partnership with the Visual Marketing Systems, VMS, here in town. All of the banners that you see around the district with the Twinsburg Tiger came to us because of our partnership through the scoreboard project. That was their part of allowing advertising on the scoreboard, both at the high school and over at the Tiger Stadium. And so, this is an important goal because we want to make sure that our school district is well-signed and that our brand is well-known throughout our community. The next action team was our Culture and Climate Action Team, and it was led by our Director of Pupil Services, Mrs. Denise Trapphegan. We want to thank Mrs. Trapphegan and her committee. They worked very diligently. And the very neat thing about this committee is there was a nice number of high school students represented. students represented on this committee, and their voices were really important when we're talking about school culture and climate. And so we thank the students that were part of that important work that happened last year, as well as the staff members, parents, and members of the community that participated. So this action team developed two goals. The first would be to increase the mental health awareness for our district and for our community members. And the second is to support a culture of equity where all students and staff are represented and respected through holistic and creative approaches. This first goal is really important. I wanted to read to the board this evening, three statistics from the Center for Disease Control in their April 2019 report. It says nationally, 7% of children aged three to 17 have diagnosed anxiety. Nationally, 3% of children aged three to 17 have diagnosed depression. For children aged three to 17 years of age with anxiety, more than one of three also have behavior problems and about one of three have depression. And so the whole conversation about mental health and mental health awareness is not just a conversation that we're having here in our community, and it's not just a conversation because the Board of Education at the state level approved the social emotional learning standards. It is a national conversation going on and an important one. And so this particular goal addresses the need to increase mental health awareness within our school district and for our community members as well. And thank you to the Board of Education. Recently, we were able to recommend to you for employment, Dr. Andrea Walker, who has already hit the ground running, talking with our staff about the need to address mental health issues with our students. Yesterday during our professional day, she met with members of our classified staff, had great conversation as we begin to try to gather baseline data so that we can make some great decisions about curriculum and supporting resources that meet the needs of our students and our staff members. So we appreciate your support of Dr. Walker's employment about a month or so ago. Goal number two here in this action team talked about a culture of equity. And one of the things that we have been very aware of is the need to make sure that our staff is a representative of the students which we serve. And so this particular primary strategy for this goal talks about the need to diversify the staff, and this is actually a goal that Mr. Sullen will be working on as our Director of Human Resources, making sure that we are attracting staff members who are reflective of our students, making sure that we have opportunities so that our students see themselves and the staff members who work with them, and that we are able to provide classroom instruction, which is representative and respectful of all. And so this is a really important strategy. And Board of Education, as you know, the district belongs to something called CAMRA, which is an organization that Mr. Sullen participates on our behalf, talks about minority candidates and recruiting minority candidates. It is not easy work. It is hard work, it is important work, and we want to make sure that we continue that work to offer our students, staff members that are diverse in all walks of life. And so we appreciate this committee taking this as an important goal, and we appreciate the work that is yet to come and what Mr. Sullen will be doing for the school district in the Office of Human Resources. Our next action team report is our Facilities Action Team. And as mentioned, this was led by Chad Welker and a very large committee, I'd have to say, very dedicated committee of residents, staff members, and members of the business community. We also had working here representatives from Lesko and Associates, and also Tony Potajil, who is a consultant for them, did a lot of work in helping this committee focus on the important work that needs to happen with this goal. The first goal, we talk about this Facilities Master Plan. As you know, Board of Education, that has been a focus here in Chad's time. He's been here now five years, and upon his employment, we recognize the need to have a plan, revisit the plan, evaluate the plan. And so our strategic plan also talks about the importance of this ongoing evaluation of the district's facilities and grounds, making sure that they're warm, safe, and dry for our students and our staff. The second goal talks about this project called the Conceptual Legacy Project. And this is the building project that we have been engaging our conversation with members of the community. We started this past summer, talking with all three of our communities with the elected officials, have since then engaged members of our staff, and we are now engaging members of our community in focus groups, talking through some ideas that were created, developed, designed through the work of this Facilities Action Plan Committee. With regard to goal number one and the Facilities Master Plan, Board of Education, you know that we have a budget that we manage every year that's specific to permanent improvement and to renovation and to keeping our buildings warm, safe, and dry. It's about $1.8 million a year that is dedicated to that, but it's also used for the purchase of buses, the purchase of curriculum, and the purchase of technology. So $1.8 million does not go a long way when you have not only roofs and pavement, parking lots, classroom infrastructure to deal with, but textbooks that need to be updated, school buses that need to be replaced on a cycle, and of course, the technology that drives so much of what we do here in the school district. So this goal number one is extremely important work because over the time that the facility assessment has been in place, annually, the board knows that usually come the winter, we're talking about what's going to happen in the summer months with our summer projects, and also in addition to the summer projects with regard to facilities and grounds, what other purchases need to be made out of that pot of money. Thankfully, this community many years ago passed this continuing permanent improvement levy, which provides those resources for the community. But this is work that is ongoing and definitely an important part of our strategic plan. And then again, the Conceptual Legacy Project, gathering of this information continues. As you know, Board, you had directed me to make sure that this school year is the year of engagement for our community, so that by the spring of 2020, we're able to present to you a lot of information that we are collecting from members of our community. I have to say, every time Chad and I present to one group or another, another idea, another thought is being presented from the community. And so I'm very hopeful that the report that you will receive in the spring, once these community forums are concluded, will provide lots of information for you to make some good decisions about the Conceptual Legacy Project moving forward. The next report is finance. And the finance obviously was led by our wonderful illustrious award-winning treasurer, Mr. Marty Aho, and a committee of very dedicated individuals, many of whom had financial backgrounds, many of them who work in the world of finance, and so it was a great committee. And this committee brought up, developed three goals. The first here is to make sure that we maintain fiscal stability through fiscal year '23 and that there is a renewal, emergency renewal levy that the board will have to consider sometime in the 2021 school year. That's a $5 million renewal levy, so that's one of the goals. Second goal talks about the redevelopment or revision of the Financial Strategic Planning Flow Chart, which we'll show here in a minute. About four or five years ago, this document was created and has really helped us explain the district's finances to the community and has kept us on track, so we'll talk about that in a second. And then also, the last goal is to make sure that we are communicating well the financial picture here in the school district, the landscape, so that our residents understand how their tax dollars are being used and how we use those tax dollars to support the learning here in our school district. So in speaking for goal one, we start to talk about that Financial Strategic Planning Flow Chart again, which you'll see in a minute. We continue to plan for renewal levies. We just passed the levy of May of 2019, which was the $4 million renewal levy. There is yet another one in the 2021 school year that the board will have to consider, and that's the $5 million renewal, emergency renewal levy. And then one of the things that we work hard here in the district is to make sure that we seek alternative funding sources. As you know, Board of Education, we've had a pretty good week, two weeks, of some grant dollars that were secured. One, a small one, but nonetheless, one that supports our trauma-sensitive school effort through the purchase of books, the Resilient Learner books. So we look for ways, small like that, or large, when we talk about the negotiation of contracts. You know that Mr. Welker and Mr. Aho work to the very most minute detail, the contracts that we ask for your approval. And so in small ways, through grant money, in large ways, through the negotiated contracts, we look to continue to be prudent in our spending, making sure that we get the most for the dollars that we have to spend on students. Goal number two, again, we talk about this Conceptual Legacy Project. If the Board of Education were to make a decision that they wish to move forward with the Conceptual Legacy Project after this year of engagement, after we determine from the feedback of our residents whether or not a project should happen and the breadth of that project, then we would have to begin to talk about a bond issue. And so this is part of the strategic plan because it's forward-thinking, it's future planning, and we know that the high school bonds will be paid off in 2021. So potentially, the Board of Education may consider a bond issue to align with the payoff of the high school bonds to support some type of conceptual legacy project. So it's part of the strategic plan here because it is planning for the future, it is part of the work that we're engaging in this year, but it's not about this year, it's about planning for the future of the school district and our facilities and grounds, making sure that they can support the learning of students so students can be future-ready to do whatever great thing they plan to do once they graduate from our high school. One of the things that Marty always talks about is being cost-effective and making sure that when we do something as far as a program, that it's sustainable over time and high quality. And one of the premier programs that we're very proud about is the academy at Twinsburg High School. Proud of the fact of the opportunities it's providing for our students, but really pleased by the partnerships that we have with, I think the latest number was over 90 business partners. And because those partners are so generous with their time and their resources, that's one of our programs here in the school district that is not expensive to run. It has huge benefits for our students, but it is not expensive to run as far as what we are committing in dollars to support it. So those are the kinds of programs that we look to build as part of this goal so that we can continue to provide unique and innovative programs to support student learning. This next slide is actually the revision of our Strategic Planning Flow Chart. As you can see, that it actually expands through 2025, and you will notice the purple squares in the middle are where we have, I guess those are squares or rectangles, one or the other, right Marty? Purple. Those are our levy renewals. You can see where we passed the one in 2019, the suggested $5 million renewal emergency levy in '20 or '21. And then there would be another one out in '23, which is another renewal levy. That's the 6.9 renewal levy that is on the horizon. Also, this is an important document because it talks to our community about the elimination of the TPP CAT tax. For many years, the Board of Education talked about the impact of that elimination to our budget. And many of you and I spent time in Columbus trying to encourage legislators to do something about the funding source here of TPP for school districts, which are now impacted in a great manner. You will see on that screen, in 2024, TPP or the CAT tax virtually disappears. And so that's an important number and an important year for us to keep in mind and a very important part of the strategic plan as we look to the future. Last goal that the Finance Committee spoke about was increasing the awareness of the financial landscape through communication. And one of the things I forgot to mention when we talked about communications is we are currently looking to redesign the district website. And when we do that, Mr. Aho is suggesting that the look of the treasurer's page be refreshed to be understandable in a greater sense than it already is to our constituency and to also make sure that everything on that website is ADA compliant. So we'll be hearing more in the next couple of months about the redesign of the website. We hope to launch it here in the spring in a soft sense and then really off to the races right before we break for the summer vacation. And then finally, Marty and his committee really focused a lot on making sure that all communication beyond what is posted on the district website, all communication about the district's financial landscape is relevant and timely, posted, printed, and sent virtually wherever it can be so that members of our community understand where we are when talking about the dollars in a sense. The sixth and final plan was under the leadership of our two building principals, Misty Johnson and Jim Reese, and they did a great job. This was a wonderfully engaging group of members of our community. Chief Noga served on this committee, Officer Frisella, our school resource officer, served on this committee. So we had experts in the field who offered great advice as we talked about building a goal regarding safety and security of our school district. And this committee developed four goals. The first one talks about building a sense of safe culture within the schools. And so you'll see here in a second, the strategy that engages our students about ways they can help our schools be safer places for them and for everyone who works in them. Our second goal talks about the development of an intervention and diversion program for students who are struggling with substance abuse. The third talks about the impact of the late start times of the last month or so. You have been seeing a lot of media release about research behind the benefits of especially adolescents starting their school day later in time. And this is something that our school district, as you know, Board of Education, have been looking at for several years. And in fact, our transportation supervisor currently, Adam House, the previous one, Eric Brunton, our assistant transportation supervisor, Tracy Abbott, Chad Welker, have actually been analyzing different ways we could adjust the start times of school and what that impact would be on the bus schedule and on staffing. And so this goal will take that to the next level because not only is it important to understand the impact on buses and fuel and staffing, but we have to talk about the impact of adjusting time and the benefits to student wellness. And that's what we're all about and making sure that we provide opportunities that support students and their well-being. And so this committee talked at great length about that. And then the last talked about a continuous safety audit for all of our grounds and buildings. So with goal one, Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Reese will tell you that they test piloted this primary strategy through last year when it was developed by the committee, and it talks about engaging our students in dialogue, having them find opportunities to share concerns or ideas with building administrators so that the schools can be safer and more pleasant places as far as culture and climate goes. And Mrs. Johnson will tell you a story about her little group of students who, the name, the Change Agents, right. So it's a group of students at Bissell who test piloted this particular strategy last spring and really have come up with some great ideas of how we can enhance the safety and security at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and they take this work very seriously. So we look forward to putting this into play at all five of our schools. The next strategy talks about an intervention diversion program. As we have talked about earlier this evening, the need to address mental health issues. With that comes the need to address substance abuse issues. And we have a wonderful menu of opportunities already in place with Beach Brook, our social workers, our school counselors, our school nurses. But we want to take this to the next level when we talk about the development of intervention and diversion specifically to students who are struggling. and diversion specifically to students who are struggling with substance abuse. So this will be a conversation that we will engage our parents in, many, many options to talk about when we're talking about diversion and intervention for students. And we look forward to engaging our members of our community here shortly, so that we can put additional safety nets, additional opportunities in a toolkit for students to be able to use if the need arises in their lives. Once again, goal three talks about this study that has been underway for several years about adjusting the start times. And the truth be told, when we created the operational change plan, the community was very specific with the Board of Education about wanting to transport all students, because many of our roads don't have sidewalks. Lots of students come from great distances, and so, in 2011 and '12, the Board was, provided feedback that all students should have transportation. And so, we're using that model in our analysis. But when we are transporting a large number of students to pro-kill and private schools, and those start times are pretty much around 8:00 in the morning, what happens is it makes the schedule for our school students have to work around other school schedules. And so, we want to study this a little bit more, engage members of the community and the Board in talking through, what might that look like as far as additional buses, additional bus drivers, additional costs to run those vehicles. But more than anything else, what we need to determine is what impact will happen to students when we talk about student wellness. And Board, as you know, when we presented this a couple of weeks back, the last word on this goal was achievement. And the Board was very reflective in wanting to make sure that the word was not achievement, that we're talking about the wellness of kids. Achievement's important, but when we're talking about the wellness, it really encapsulates all. So, that word was changed since the last presentation. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I appreciate your thoughtful reflection on that goal and your suggestion to change the word. And then finally, we recognize the need to continuously evaluate our buildings and grounds to make sure that they are safe for our students and our staff that work here, and for folks who visit. So this particular goal will include having the Board of Education contract with external experts. We've used the Ohio Schools Council, who works with individuals who are affiliated with Ohio Homeland Security. We contract with Neonet to talk about our infrastructure, making sure that we're not concerned about ransomware and those kinds of things. And then also, and probably the most important thing, is our continued partnership with our local law enforcement, sheriff's office, Reminderville, and of course, the city of Twinsburg, both police and fire who support us every day. So, this goal talks about the security analysis that will be ongoing, contracting with outside individuals, because sometimes when you're inside an organization, you're here every day, you might not see something. Somebody comes in from the outside in that area of expertise, and they can identify a soft spot that we need to address. And so, this goal would talk specifically about making sure that those analyses of our facilities and grounds, our buses, all of the property is safe for students, and using that expertise to continuously update and upgrade the Board's facilities, so that we can say that our place of study for the children is warm, safe, and dry, safe being the most important. So that concludes my presentation this evening for our proposed goals for the strategic plan. Six action teams, 200 people the last year, more than that, the last three years, who have worked diligently, Board of Education. This is not an administrative recommendation, this is coming from the community. Many members of the community worked many hours, did lots of research. The administrative team really brought it together for you, for your consideration. But we represent 200 people who dedicated a lot of time to visioning, dreaming, thinking about what the Twinsburg City Schools should look like within the next five years. Lot of effort, and I proudly request that you consider approving the strategic plan this evening. Any questions?
Questions from my colleagues. Again, public thank you to all hundreds of volunteers. It seems, you know, it was years ago that we sat in the auditorium and heard the original reports and such, and having sat on one of the specific committees, I saw, you know, just how much they cared about, you know, the particular topic. There's still a lot of data to be collected, there's still funding to be sorted out, and all these will come as vetted contracts, you know, into the future. So, you know, so while there's a lot of goals here, there's still a lot of details to be sorted out on the actual finance side, you know, as well. So all that will come through the Board probably over the next year or two.
Just a quick comment, it was a big plus, too, having students involved in this because they saw things from perspective, other perspectives that we may have overlooked or not seen or considered from a, you know, today's point of view. So it was really good to have the students involved, and I would like to see them start to get more involved in some of these things, too, in the future.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I mean, we've, you know, we're three work sessions, and also over the course of working and collaborating with the people that have been involved, you know, in the creation of the strategic plan. What I will emphasize is that this is a living, breathing document. So, as we've made some adjustments and changes based on the last work session that we had, I would imagine that as, as things continue to evolve in the district, as technology continues to evolve, as things continue to change, that this document will change as well. I do feel that it's important to also acknowledge all of the work that's gone into this. I know my colleagues have already mentioned, you know, the, you know, a couple hundred people, excuse me, that have been involved in this work. But also, I mean, I want to acknowledge that, that, you know, countless hours, you know, that's gone into this, and I think it's, it's important to me that, that their input is reflective in this document. The other piece that I also want to, want to point on is with respect to the conceptual legacy project that is within the strategic plan, engaging key stakeholders in every community, beginning with the elected officials, and gathering their feedback. And although we're not, you know, we're still in the process of moving through certain phases of gathering feedback, the fact of the matter is, you know, without the community's support, pretty much they're going to really dictate what happens or doesn't happen. So, you know, I thought it was important, as we sat in on some of those sessions, to listen to the feedback, and I know that there were adjustments made to that. I don't, it's been through a few iterations already, from the time that you guys originally created it, and I imagine that it's going to go through a few more iterations before we come to some point, or some consensus as a Board, that we decide to take another step, whatever that is. So, again, it's a lot of work over, over an extensive period of time, and this is really the roadmap for moving us along in the future, and again, adapting to the change as it comes.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to remonstrance, item G in the agenda. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card found in the lobby to the treasurer prior to the meeting, so they may be recognized by the Board President and welcome to make comment. Formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has had the opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel should be submitted and read through the Office of the Superintendent. Here's where I'm going to stop. I know why some people are here tonight, so I'm going to suspend that as long as they adhere to the last bullet item on the blue card, which is public comments are not to be frivolous, repetitive, harassing, abusive, off-topic, personally directed, too lengthy, antagonistic, obscene, or irrelevant. If that is the case, you will be stopped. And although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at a Board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes, and so the total time of 30 minutes is used. Each person addressing the Board is asked to give his or her name and address. I do have cards that I've received, and I will go through them in order. I think we should be close on time. If your comments are similar to others, maybe want to call your time back a little bit and not be repetitive, but I am going to go ahead and start and ask Audrey Holzman.
Hi, my name's Audrey Holzman. I live at 2305 Champion Trail. President Felber and members of the Board, I stand in front of you tonight as a resident, a parent, and a champion of the Twinsburg City Schools. It has been my privilege to serve alongside of you in the past three levy campaigns as the letter to the editor champ, I'm sorry, as the letter to the editor chairperson. I am so grateful to live in this wonderful community, whereas the TCS tagline reminds us, the schools and the community are one. Last night, the community spoke by a 14% and 20% margin, electing a new member to the Board, a margin that clearly communicates that your stakeholders want change. I am disheartened in the manner in which the community learned of the unprecedented five-year contract being brought to the Board tonight. The ill-timing of this resolution not only lends scrutiny to standard business, but also distracts us from our most important objective, student achievement. The first line in the new district mission statement is partnering with the community. This resolution sends the wrong message. It does not build trust, and it is not transparent. No one disputes your right to approve this resolution, but I urge you to reflect on this question. Is this prudent? Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Mott.
Okay, Terrence Mott, Youngstown, Ohio. I've been unfortunately dragged into political problems as a result of, the government borrowed against my land some time ago, 30 years ago. So now, it involves the satellite business. Okay? So what I stated on the card there is that we need to get our kids in tune to what's going to be happening with communications, okay? Stuff related to agriculture, as far as new modern methods, and other stuff satellite-based, I should state, they, it's a development, too. It's for the development of the community. They did this. Okay? They're going to put a shopping center on my property at some time. There's going to be a big sewer project along the lakes down from me. So this has all been planned behind my back. Anyhow, all I'm saying is that that direction's coming. I contacted certain countries that were involved with this project, and I'm seeking a financial position with them and the development of these projects, okay? Of course, US will be number one. I'm involved with making sure our brands are overseas, okay? The local brand. I will mention them, but that's what I'm involved in. Not just European brands, I want to see our brands there, okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Levine.
My name is Lisa Levine. I reside at 9337 Adam Run, and I, we currently, I'm here also on behalf of my husband, who with a short notice of the agenda being presented tonight, he couldn't make it in time to present a card. But I want to talk about, as soon as I get to it, I wasn't sure when my name was going to be called here. Just give me one minute. So this is in regards to an email that was previously sent to one of the current Board members, representing quite a few family members' views of the agenda tonight, stating that the Board currently has a financial and a moral duty to hold off on any discussions of newly-elected, of any contract extensions until the newly-elected Board members are actually in term. Any outgoing Board members should abstain from a vote until the end of his term, and we urge existing Board members who will retain their term to discuss this with that person and other members of the Board. If the new Board elects to renew the current superintendent's contract, the community in general will be behind all of the members. However, pushing the contract through with the present Board is igniting a current poor taste in the community's mouths in just a few hours that it has been discussed throughout the community. We have experienced that. There has been a small group of at least 50 voting families have talked to not support the capital improvement levy that will be presented to the community if the contract discussions are not delayed until the new Board member is in office. Please understand this group will grow incremental, incidentally, by how tonight is handled with the voting situation. We need to do what is right for the community and for the students. They are number one, that is why we're all here, for the students. And the Board reflects our, the community's opinion, so the current Board, the outgoing Board member needs, the elected newly-elected Board member needs to be present for this, for this decision. At the beginning of the current superintendent's talk, there was a statement, the mission statement of unwavering commitment and unlimited possibilities, and you can demonstrate that right here tonight. If you are going to pursue that mission statement, that needs to be enacted right here tonight. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Adrian Gordon.
Adrian Gordon, 8025 Megan Meadow Drive. First of all, thank you everybody for voting for me. So that was my first time ever taking on a campaign. It grew me quite a bit as a human being. So it's a lot more work than I thought, so I'm looking forward to serving the district, and I'm excited about it, something I've been, very passionate about education for a long time, so. So I'm really excited to be up there and be able to, to really give back. I've been doing it on the sidelines for a long time, so. Tonight, I would like to talk about two things on the agenda. Clearly, the district supported me in this election because they think I have a skillset that will actually have a positive impact on this district. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been elected. And unfortunately, the day after the election, two very important items were put on the agenda that will lock us in on five years. One is the strategic plan, and the second one is Kathy Powers' contract. So I'm just going to ask the Board to pause for a second and listen to the public opinion on this. So I think there was a lot of really good work done on the strategic plan, by the way. So it was exciting to see that. But there are some things that I bring to the table, and I've talked about it throughout the campaign, that strategic planning is one of my skillsets, it's one of my expertise. And one of the things I noticed today, I think we can do a little bit better, so I'm asking the Board to maybe pause until January on the strategic plan, not because the Goals have any issues with them, they don't, but I think we can take it to one level further by putting in KPIs, key performance metrics. They're not in there right now, or at least it wasn't shown. So, that's one area that I really can help, and when you put the right KPIs in place, right, then you're going to hold yourself accountable with them, with the right deadlines, and you're going to see better chances for success. So it's an area where I can substantially help. And then second, on the contract, since I'm assuming the proposed contract's not available for public review, I'm not sure if it has best practices on it regarding executive performance management. This is another area where I can also provide some value. So I would just like, hope that the Board rethinks the decision to rush them through. It substantially reduces the collective ability that we all have to represent the people of the district. And that's... people of the district. And that's really my concern. So if the board feels like they have to bring the contract that expires in July up, and I understand there's reasons that you would potentially want to negotiate early, as opposed to a March renewal, which we've done before, I'm asking you to pass it for a year duration, as opposed to five years. The contract's been a three-year duration in the past. It gives time for me to ramp up my knowledge on the district and then come back with the skill sets on performance management that I can bring to the district. And so it also will have some benefits that we will have elimination of the bizarre renewal cycle that we're in that's creating this today, right? Because now you have a lame duck issue. If we get in on a different cadence, you won't have that anymore. And I think it will be a kinder, gentler process in the future. So I just ask that you consider that before you vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kleiman. I have one more. Melanie John. Is it, I'm sorry, Jolton. Jol, I'm sorry. Jolton.
Hi, my name's Melanie Jolton. I reside at nine-nine-six-eight Pebble Beach Cove, Reminderville, Ohio. And what I have to say is pretty moot after what Adrian just said and showed with her passion with education and her skill set. Basically, I just wanted to say, I learned today that you'll be voting on the, to approve the complex five-year strategic plan, and something I know Adrian has talked about in her campaign in depth and is very passionate about, obviously. Since the plans are not about this year, but the next five years while she'll be on the board, I hope you would like to engage her. She has a fresh perspective and her ideas and suggestions before voting on it. I did like everything I saw as well. I just, I always think we can improve. There can always be improvements, especially with a fresh perspective. So that's basically it. Excuse the hat today. I didn't plan on speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes remonstrance. We will move on to item H, treasurer's report. H1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of October 2nd, 2019, and special meetings, October 3rd, 2019, and October 15th, 2018, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is your motion for H1 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Slurr. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And H1 passes five-zero. Moving on to action items personnel. No objection. I'll read all three. I1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1. As per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2. As per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, H, I'm sorry, I3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contracts, recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3. Per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is our motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Slurr. Mrs. Powers, I don't think we had any retirements. We did, oh, I'm, oh, was it on there? I'm sorry, Denise, we can't let you go. No, all joking aside, congratulations on your retirement. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And I1, two, and three pass five-zero. Now, I'll move on to action items new business. J. J1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation of five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars from RDP Sports of Twinsburg for Twinsburg High School Pep Club to be used for homecoming, per the attached exhibit. J2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. Three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the below-listing items to be deleted from inventory. Four, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopts the Title I Parent Involvement Policy that was approved at the Title I meeting held on October 14th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. Five, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the addendum for client service with Renhill, per the attached exhibit, that's J5. Six, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the revised 2019-2020 central office salary schedule, per the attached exhibit J6. Seven, resolve that the Twins Board of Education directs the superintendent to approve on an as-needed basis an expulsion appeal hearing designee for the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year, Ronald L. Victor, Doctorate of Education, at an hourly rate of one-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus mileage at fifty-five cents per mile. This is a general fund expense, as sent to the board under separate cover. Eight, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the settlement agreement, release, and waiver for educational expenses for one student receiving special education services outside the district, per the conditions outlined in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Nine, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the employment agreement for the superintendent of schools, Catherine M. Powers, commencing August 1st, 2020, and expiring July 31st, 2025, as sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, 10, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the Twinsburg City School District Strategic Plan effective 2019-2024, as per the attached exhibit J10. Do I have a motion for those 10 items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Slurr. I'm gonna lead off with discussion, just thanking RDP. And let's see. And of course, the change in salary schedules and things with Renhill. The expulsion hearing designee is something we do every year, so we have someone a little bit more degree to hear those expulsion hearings and such. Is there anything in particular on the releasing waiver, anything, Mrs. Powers, that you want to draw our attention to?
The, the Renhill addendum, Board of Education last meeting, I think, before you authorized the daily sub-rate to be increased to one-hundred-and-five dollars. This addendum would allow us to do that now because we secure our substitute teachers through the Renhill Group, and that contract needed to be amended to support the increase by the ten dollars a day for the teacher substitutes that we use here in the school district.
Okay. I'm gonna continue with discussion, and these are my words. I hope you will listen to some of the details. In working with Superintendent Kathy Powers for six years, twice as president of the board, has provided me a front row seat witnessing the leadership standard that she has set for the students, staff, and community of the Twinsburg City School District. After nearly a decade in her role, she continues to routinely demonstrate an extensive attention to detail and relies on data to make key decisions. The attention to detail and focus on data has helped guide all five of our school buildings to receive national recognition in areas of academics and co-curriculars. Along with our treasurer, she has successfully navigated our district through challenging financial times, including the successful passage of multiple school levies, addressing unfunded mandates, and as well as always being focused on the social, emotional needs of our students and staff. She has a strong focus on security with all school administrative leaders, as demonstrated by the recent completion of FEMA training certification program. She has also implemented and oversaw construction of building welcome centers and led to a variety of initiatives focused on addressing school bullying. Superintendent Powers is a strong advocate for the Twinsburg City School District, not only locally and regionally, but also at the state level. She works tirelessly to ensure this district is well-represented, and she has often sought out to serve at the local, regional, and state levels on a variety of state education committees. A high-performing superintendent, Superintendent Powers was recently awarded the Martha Holden's Jenny Outstanding Superintendent of the Year Award, which not only recognized her leadership, but her strong focus on student achievement. And it was during that process that I found out that you received a similar award from the same organization when you were a second-grade teacher. I won't say how many years, I promise. This honor has brought, also brought a special reward of ten thousand dollars to the district for the blended learning program to, you know, that's gonna be used in the district. So let's get to it. The Board of Education only hires two positions, treasurer and superintendent. This board, and boards previous, continue to utilize a biannual evaluation process established by the Ohio School Board Association, moderated by a third party, with ample opportunity for all board members to participate in the evaluation process. Let me repeat, in the nearly ten years as superintendent, there has been more than ample opportunity for all board members to participate in this process. And every board member before you was present at these evaluations and/or provided with time to comment in official records. There are board members that have had the opportunity to exert firsthand and closely work with the superintendent. The Ohio Legislature has expressly stated that boards of education are required, required to act on existing contractors, contracts, from January of the year before until it expires March 1st of the year of the contract. During this fourteen month window, boards are expected to take action. In this situation, we are now down to the last three and a half months before that deadline. Because of her commitment to the Twinsburg City School District, our students, our staff, and the Twinsburg community, I am casting my, my vote in support of renewal, keeping our district moving forward and stable. I'm extremely pleased with her documented performance and look forward to continuing to work with Superintendent Powers in the future. I'll entertain other comments from my colleagues.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. First and foremost, you know, make sure I congratulate Adrian on a hard part campaign. I want to talk about a couple of things. One, one with respect to the, the strategic plan. As I kind of commented on, when, when we were making our remarks about the strategic plan, it's a, it's a living breed and document. It's fluid. And, you know, I don't know that there isn't an opportunity or room for, for making adjustments to the strategic plan. Two, I'm very much looking forward to working with you. You know, clearly, I think that, you know, and even amongst this board, you know, we all have differences. And so I don't expect that to be any different. However, I do have a lot of respect for what you bring to the board. And based on, you know, what I bring to the board, I'm hoping that, you know, we can have some consensus with respect to decisions that are made moving forward. So, you know, with respect to the strategic plan, it is a five-year plan, but we work on it incrementally. That being said, I'd be remiss, I can't acknowledge or not acknowledge the, the level of involvement and the impact that the superintendent has had in this process and leading us to the point where we are now. I feel personally that she's been instrumental in, in making that happen, obviously under the guidance of, of the Board of Education. She's continued to keep us abreast. We've had an opportunity to provide feedback. We've had an opportunity to gather feedback. We've made adjustments. We've adapted. I would expect that we'll continue to do that. But I feel that it's critical to have someone in a position that, to help, to help drive what's been created. One point. Two, Rob talked about the instrument that we use, that, yeah, it's, it's through the Ohio School Boards Association, but I also want to make it a point, to also say that the Buckeye Association of School Administrators also has a part in, 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 in creating this instrument that we use. And not only that, the Ohio Department of Education as well. There is a formative and summative component involved, where it does allow us to, to check progress. Both the superintendent and the treasurer are required to provide evidence to support meeting goals or lack thereof. And during the summative process, we provide feedback and recommendations moving forward with expectations, even in areas of improvement. And they're expected to do that and do the same cycle, bring evidence to make sure that they're meeting their goals. I personally am a believer, a firm believer, that education is the one space where politics has no place. That's my personal belief. And I make decisions, you know, just based on the information that I have. I also, and this is my personal belief, I feel, I feel that it's, it's a disadvantage to have someone weigh in on someone's contract when they haven't had an opportunity to evaluate them over an extended period of time. Five people sitting up here have had the opportunity to do that. And, you know, we, we, we've gone through a pretty rigorous process where we're allowed to, to weigh in and, and make decisions and make recommendations and so forth and so forth. Every person that's sitting up here has, has been involved in that process. So, you know, that being said, I just wanted to make sure that I made some remarks. And in addition to that, I've got skin in the game. I have a son who's currently at the high school. I'm not of the opinion or of the mind to make decisions that are gonna be detrimental to my own child. So I care enough about my own child, and I care enough about every other child in this district. And through the work that I do for a living, and, and then I've worked with other superintendents and serving on, on the board of the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, I've had the opportunity to actually work on three separate contracts. Ms. Holzman, I, I respectfully disagree with you that five years is unprecedented. It is, it is not. There, there's, there's evidence that, you know, we just approved a five-year contract for the superintendent at the CBCC. I will tell you that it's based on, and, and it's individualized. I mean, it's, it's based on a body of work. It's based on, you know, where we intend to go as a district. It's based on what's been achieved. And I'm, and I have a firm belief that Mrs. Powers is deserving, at this juncture, of a five-year contract. I also recognize that there are a lot of people that will disagree with me. And I'm fine with that, and I can appreciate your opinions. But I also know that I've received a lot of feedback in support of, of, of awarding her, her renewed contract. So, you know, there are two sides to, to, to the issue. We listen, I listen to both sides in making an informed decision. And, you know, again, I respect everyone's opinion and your right to feel the way that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Further comments?
Yeah. So Superintendent Powers, I had the pleasure of working with you for two years. And you are very diligent with what you do. You're very good at what you do. However, we do have a new board member coming on board, and she does deserve the opportunity that the rest of us had to, to work with you before deciding your contract. I'm not saying we shouldn't give you, give you a renewal. I'm asking that we revise it once the new member takes office, and give her a chance to work with her and form her own opinion like we have had to form our own opinion. You are diligent with what you do. You're hardworking. I am not gonna doubt that for you. But I do feel that it's our due diligence to listen to the, the community and also give Mrs. Gordon a chance to be a part of us and make her own opinions and, and be part of this board.
Other comments?
Yes. You know, I just want to address the insinuation that this is being rushed through. It's the second time that we've done a contract that, in my time that I've been on the board with Superintendent Powers, that that has been insinuated. And it's just not true. You know, long before elections were decided, before who decided if they were going to run for reelection, who decided that they may pull to run for election to become a part of the board, there were discussions amongst the five of the board members up here in regards to starting the process to renew a contract for Superintendent Powers. Contracts like this are not done overnight, much like a union contract with the TEA or the TSSA. Those contracts are vetted out over months of work, going back between parties, between board members, conversations in the back room, you know, during executive sessions, which are privileged, you know. You know, these negotiations occur every day in this district, at every single meeting, throughout other districts around. Superintendent Powers is currently operating on her third three-year contract. So yes, while a five-year contract might be a little out of the ordinary for a first-term superintendent, as Mr. Curtis said, there's numerous cases throughout the state where five-year contracts are offered on second and third contracts. We are not a district who has done anything out of the ordinary. We have neighbors up to the north who just recently re-approved their superintendent's contract for, I believe that was seven years in Beechwood, actually earlier than we have. You know, so the insinuation that this is done overnight, I take offense with, I can understand where, you know, people may seem that it's on after an election. However, you know, this board has been discussing this for months, has, from my understanding, we're all on the same page, you know, in terms of what we were going to be moving forward with. I apologize again for anybody who feels that there is a sense of impropriety here. But I want to assure you that, you know, this has been done, this has been worked on for a while. When it comes to the strategic plan, again, we've talked about this for three years. We've had three work sessions that have been open to the public where these documents have been, you know, put up on screens. People worked on computers, words changed, things taken out, things added in, you know. We met with, we had, you know, presentations from members of the action teams that came that presented their ideas prior to, you know, the strategic plan, you know, being involved, you know, being put together in its form that you see tonight. All of these meetings were open to the public. They were broadcast, they were advertised, everybody had ample opportunity to be there, everybody had ample opportunity to, you know, address the board, address what was going on. You know, so I take offense to the fact that, you know, that people have not had an opportunity to be there because that's just blatantly not true. Now, while we may agree to disagree, and you may have different feelings than a board member up here, you know, the insinuation that things are done privately and behind closed doors is blatantly false. And, you know, I needed to remind the public of the plans and the processes that we followed for this. We can agree that, you know, you may feel differently, but this has been an open and honest conversation. This has been an open and honest process. This has included hundreds of hours, thousands of hours of work. It's included hundreds of people across the community. It's included staff members, it's included parents, it's included non-parents, it's included business owners, it's included our safety forces, it's included outside council, it's included outside engineers and varying people to help bring in these things. And so, you know, it's not something that we're rushing on. You know, while I can appreciate the fact of a recently elected board member wanting to jump in and continue to move our schools forward, you know, when we are all elected, we're elected to run out our term. And it has never been my intention to stop doing what I've been doing, what I've put my heart and soul into doing, you know, because of the results of an election. So, you know, I am not going to stop board business because on January 1, I will no longer be here. And you can respect that decision, or you cannot respect that decision, you can agree with me or you cannot agree with me. But I've been open and honest in my four years up here, and, you know, that's how I'm going to end my four years here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
I'm just going to keep it very simple because there's been a lot said. But I can tell you from working with all five of these, well, all the rest of the board members, that they're all dedicated to your kids, our schools, and not one of them or us have come in this with any specific agenda other than, we all have had kids in the schools, four of us still have students in these schools, and we just all want what's best for our students. And might not always agree on what is best or how to go about that direction, takes a lot of, lot of work behind the scenes, a ton of hours, and, you know, sometimes thinkless, sometimes not, but we just, like I said, I don't think any one person ran with any agenda other than wanting to serve our kids, our community, and what's best for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I thank my board colleagues for all their comments. I did want to elaborate a little bit, and Mr. Curtis, you talked about our summative and formative evaluation process. Those are evaluating goals that are set the year prior. And collectively, at least the three of us sitting right here have 18 years on this board. That's a lot of time, that's a lot of front-row seat to the work of this district. And every single one of them, I can't put words in their mouth, but they'll probably say that first year is a blur. There's a lot to learn, there's a lot of terms, there's a lot of things going on to keep a $42 million, 500-employee district running with 4,100 students, and I always say 10,000 parents and guardians. There's a lot of moving parts. And to expect that to be assimilated and understood, and I welcome collaboration with Mrs. Gordon, I welcome you to the board, but in four board meetings from January to March 1 deadline, that's four meetings. That's not enough time, and it's not fair to all the evaluations that have been documented prior. And it's just a lot to take on and to understand in such a short period of time. So I wanted to address that timeline because there's been a lot of contracts that expires in July. You know, March 1 is the deadline to make a decision. And it's a very short window. We are well within the 14-month window that started January of the previous year of this contract. Are there further comments from my colleagues? Mr. Aho, roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Slur?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those 10 items pass 4-1. We are now on to miscellaneous. Any comments from my colleagues? Okay, I think everybody's talked out. The board is in need of executive session, so I will make the motion that the board enters into executive session at 9:00 PM to discuss the employment discipline compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A. I have made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Slur. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Slur?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
The board is now in executive session.